One nursing home had died and 70 staff members. And I don't remember how many other.
False meeting order.
That's horrible.
Nursing homes.
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, they canceled the special.
Call.
I don't know. I haven't heard that.
Here.
Baikman.
Present.
Hughes.
Present.
Fry.
Present.
Schroller.
Here.
Aaron's.
Here.
From.
Here.
Seven oh.
Okay, first up, we have the approval of minutes. Does anybody have any corrections or amendments?
Yes. On the special meeting for March the 2nd, Pipia was here. She has it there were eight signed, but there's only seven people listed and Pia was one of them. That was the one missing.
That's right, yeah. She is on there. Okay. Anybody else have anything?
Moved approved, regular meeting on February 24th, 2020, special meeting March 2nd, 2020.
Second.
With amendment.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Seven oh.
Uh, next up, we have public comments. Does anybody have anything to say, public comments? Nope.
She's on the agenda.
Yeah, she, yeah, she is.
You're on the agenda, sorry.
She's not here.
Emily was supposed to be coming, but I couldn't move her.
I wouldn't worry too much about it. Oh, she was at a, she was coming from another meeting, so.
Oh.
Well, we just moved somebody.
Yeah.
Uh, Katie?
I'm Katie Ohm, coach in Marysville swim team for the last eight years, and we just kinda wanted to come and get some communication on a few of the things that we've wanted to do and that we've been doing and, um, so one of the things, did you all get a copy of this? Okay. Um, so one, as a team, we'd like to put up a memorial bench along there with the other two on the north side of the pool, and I guess we wanted to make sure that we didn't, what we needed to do as far as placement. The bench is not officially ordered yet because there has to be three on order for Landalls to even start that process, so there is no really set date or time, but thought that maybe, I don't know if the, I don't know if the location of the bench needs to be an issue, and does the city need to be the one to anchor it? I don't know how we've done that in the past.
We have one more spot for a bench that's already going in. Um, we're, there's not much space. Uh, I know it looks, but we, we need to be able to play with the bleachers and all that stuff, and right now, there's three benches on that side I think you're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and to just, I, I think.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah. So it's kinda, we're kinda limited on, on space in City Park.
Okay. Um, and it's, I'm sure you know, I mean, it would be for one of our coaches that recently passed away.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, um, so if there's not any space on the north side of the pool, there are no benches on the south side, is that an option?
That's where the other bench is going.
Okay.
Yeah, we're putting one on the south side. Is there?
There's usually two sets of bleachers on the, that would you put on the south side, right?
Right, right. And so we, I kinda worked it out with, with our park superintendent, or park supervisor about where exactly that one's gonna go. Um, and that person's already, obviously already requested it. Um, I've been trying to come up with different ideas rather than benches. I don't know if you have any, I know, obviously, it's not on order, maybe there's another idea we can come up with inside the pool somewhere that would be meaningful. Uh, any different ideas than, cause we got 30 benches around City Park, then it's, it's kinda getting crowded.
No rub on the trail?
No, no.
Okay.
We, we can, we can continue, we can talk about this, but you can work, we can work together and figure something out. That would be, okay, that's fine. But yeah, if somebody else has already requested it, there's not a lot we can do there. Um, so then the next thing is, um, our practice times have been for about the last four years have been two different sets of practices. Uh, since we, since the new pool was put in, it cut our practice space more than a half because we used to be able to swim across the pool, the whole, the whole way down that length, and when you have a practice with about 50 kids, sometimes more depending on my numbers for the season, um, makes it kinda hard, especially with different ability levels. I have to consider the safety of my younger swimmers, um, not getting run down during laps. Um, so I had split them by ability level and time of day, and so right now, our practice times, I have my, my level three, my advanced swimmers, my high school swimmers coming at 8:00 AM after lap swim, um, which is from 6:00 to 8:00 AM. My level three swimmers at 8:00 AM to approximately 9:15. Sometimes we get out of there earlier due to swimming lessons, and sometimes we hang out till 9:30 if we're finishing a set, just depending on what meet we're preparing for. Um, it, that time just seems to work really well for our high school kids who, they go to weights, they'll go to early weights, they have to get to work afterwards. A lot of them, some of them even work at the pool at times, and so after that, they get ready and go. Um, my second level class is then 11:15 to 12:30, um, and these kids are, I mean, they can't get themselves to and from practice, so that's kinda why we like to keep that one around that lunch hour time so that somebody, mom, dad, grandma, grandpa, is able to drop off and pick up for their convenience. So, um, in the past, I, you know, working, I've worked with the different pool managers on our practice times, and we've been able to, um, get through that, you know, seen what, work together on that, and, uh, I mean, I continue to do that. I don't, as far as I understand, we don't have a pool manager yet. Is that?
No, but very soon.
Not yet?
Soon.
Okay.
Hope to have somebody in place, yeah.
I'm just, I would, you know, whoever it is, it doesn't matter. I mean, happy to work with them regarding that. Um, we've been doing this for quite a while, and it seems to work really well for our swimmers and happy to work around swimming lessons and all the things that the pool needs to do.
Yeah. And that might be what maybe would be best is once we get a pool manager in place, then you can work with that person and work out a schedule.
Okay.
So.
All right. I just wanted to, I get to bring that up because I was told that there was some issue with.
A couple managers have had trouble with it. It's hard to get the pool cleaned because they never have any time. I checked with like six pools around us, they all just have one time for lap, uh, swim team. So that has been an issue, and our, we do have a policy in place, and it says one time from, um, 11 to, 11:15 to 12:30. That is what the policy does say, so we'd have to change the policy.
Okay.
We were not aware that you were doing this until I, I've had two managers in a row complain about not being able to clean the pool.
Really?
Well, there's no time. When would they do it?
That information was never communicated to me.
Well, of course, which is fine.
I mean, that's, you know.
Well, cause cleaning the pool is difficult if you can't ever get in it.
Mm-hmm. I mean, there's a lot of, you know, I mean, we are only there for an hour at each, you know, given time. I understand they need to clean the pool, definitely.
Like three hours, totally.
You know? Um, so, yeah, I mean, I guess we need to work with the, the new pool manager regarding that, but, I mean, can we possibly work on having this in our, in the policy that we have two spots? Because as far as what the other pools do, we are one of the larger teams in.
I mean, I.
In our area, and, and the other teams are considerably smaller than we are.
Sabetta and Hiawatha, and they're all smaller. Is that right?
Sabetta would be the only one that's big.
Sabetta's probably not smaller.
Yeah, cause they're one of them.
But, but Hiawatha and, yeah, and their, their practice times, I believe, are at like 6:00 AM. I would, my kids would come much earlier.
They do.
But that's lap swim, and.
Right.
I don't think that that would go over well with the community to change that around, and that's not what I wanna do.
Right, so.
Is that possible, though, to get that? I mean.
It's, it's a council decision to change a policy. You're not gonna change without talking to new lifeguard or new.
Well, no, I'm not saying we do it now, but I'm saying it's, it is an option. I would say we could discuss that for sure.
Well, you gotta remember, you may be employing lifeguards then, too. Most of them do not.
Yeah, but I was gonna say, other places don't have lifeguards.
So you could get rid of that.
I mean, you've got a lot of the most qualified swimmers in the community.
Or when they have swim team.
You mean from.
There's usually, there's usually lifeguards on the swim team.
Right.
You know.
But they don't bring in and pay lifeguards at these other towns.
Okay. I mean, and that's, we, we are fine to not really have a lifeguard on duty. Um, we can.
We have, yes, we utilize one during practice. We certainly utilize, um, coaches who have jumped in when appropriate and when necessary. Um, and that's why we're there, and that's why there's as many of us as there are. Um, so, I mean, Katie and I have both done that.
Yeah. Ultimately, I mean, the safety factor of it, we usually keep our very beginner swimmers in one lane with an adult. Sometimes the high school students that are not working at that time will come down and, and help us because it's a long way across that pool, down and back and down and back, and they get tired. So, um, yeah, that is a concern, but yeah, if that could at least be a consideration, if you guys are willing to consider changing that policy, it would be, help us out tremendously. Um, so I guess moving on until we, until we have a pool manager at that point, okay. Um, and then lastly, um, the meets, the scheduled meets. Um, we have had for, since before I was coaching, and I think before I even swam, um, there was always occasionally a Wednesday night swim. Um, it takes a couple of hours. Um, we try and take turns hosting, but some towns, it's, you know, everybody's kinda got their different things scheduled. It has, in the past, worked very well for Marysville to host it because we have a really good facility for hosts, just for swim meets in general. Um, but usually, the purpose of our Wednesday night meets is to accommodate the Fourth of July holiday so that our swim season does not drag on and on and on, um, and then keeping without that extra week. Um, and then, you know, I mean, a lot of kids play multiple sports, and they're, they're off, some of them have to do ball tournaments, summertime, families do their, there's weddings, there's all kinds of things going on in the summertime. Our league requires that the kids swim at least three meets, they have to make three regular season meets to qualify for league, and that's been a league rule for over 20 years easily. Um, so we kinda have that Wednesday night meet to accommodate some of those swimmers to give them a chance to make that requirement if they really intend on competing at, at league. And so that's what it's been in the past, and it's been beneficial. A lot of people come here, a lot of parents, they get off work right away because the meets typically start at 6:00, so they get off work, come here right away, and they stick around and they eat because they have not had supper, they're not gonna drive back all the way to Fall City or Hiawatha without stopping to eat before they go home.
That also violates the policy because that is in the policy book that it's free swim every Wednesday, 6:30 to 8:00. Is there any way you could do it a different night besides Wednesday?
We might be able to, if you change, if you ask, I'm sorry. Um, if you ask us to do that next year, the problem is we're running into history, and we plan 2020 season was planned in 2019.
But this policy is way old since before the new pool.
And so is the history and the, of us doing it on Wednesday nights. And so, um, we have planned one, we were asked to have two, we said we can't do two, we can do one, um, at the time within 2019 when we planned this, knowing the history of what we have been doing in the past.
So we could, we could create carve out and accept into the policy, especially in the interim?
Well, it's just that it's July 1st, where everybody's home for the weekend. I mean, I.
When making a schedule, um, knowing, and I don't know history plays into it, but the facility, I mean, it's a, it's a city facility that you guys are utilizing. Um, we would prefer that, when making the schedule, you actually confer with the city rather than.
You have to come to our meetings.
Well, I mean, that's.
We didn't know when they were. You know, media weeds we go to, too.
No, I'm saying, you're saying you want to be included, I'm saying you can be included because you know when the seating meeting is.
Right. But, I mean, it's, it's, it, you guys have an idea before you go into that seating meeting where, where you're trying to put your, your meets, right?
Well, when our season is, for sure, but, um, who's hosting which meets besides league? You know, a league year, you host three meets a league year, and actually, Marysville hosts next 2021.
Right.
We host league, so there would be three home meets.
Right.
That year. Um, but, I mean, we don't generally, the best, we try to do is, you know, I try not to host a meet when it's like big blue barbecue weekend and dance recital, um, try to gauge when FFAs is big, 4H, um, all the, all the camps. I mean, we try and take into consideration as much as we can, uh, but sometimes we're, you know, the other towns are doing the same thing. We try and schedule as best we can around everybody, but, you know, I don't, I'm, like I said, I've been doing this for eight years, and it had never been that, I think, that the swim team had come here like this before, and we've just had been doing our, our regular thing, and nothing was ever communicated to us that it needed to change or that there was an issue with it, so, until recently, so here we are.
Gotcha.
But, uh, yeah, so our 2019 schedule is done. Um, I can, we can talk in the future about doing a different night other than a Wednesday night. The problem we run into is ball.
Sure.
Tuesdays, Thursdays. Is it possible that free swim one week, like when we have our meet, free swim could be a Thursday instead of a Wednesday?
We, you can't imagine what that's like. Um, there's a lot of people that count on that.
Okay.
A lot of people that are, if we change it, we need to change it for the year, probably not a night.
Okay.
They'll call, they'll scream, they.
But isn't it a lot easier for a bunch of mostly adults than a bunch of kids to flex their schedules? I, I don't.
They're not adults, that, that free swim is for everybody.
Well, but I mean.
It's every kid. A lot of people that can't afford passes, can't afford tickets, they know.
They take advantage of that.
And they come every single. Wednesday. Wednesday.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, every single one.
Mm-hmm.
So it would be easier, yeah, like I said, for us to change all free swim to, but you're right, if they're all playing ball, and I mean, I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's just, it's just been in the policy since the swim team and the city wrote that policy, and that was when the pool was new, so I'm surprised you've never known that to be an issue.
Yeah, me too, because I was not present for that.
Well, I, I would assume Maria was, because at that time, it was her that was down there. So, I don't know.
Okay, yeah, so I was not really made aware of, of that.
Yeah.
At that time.
So sorry, I mean, you're right, you just didn't know, and.
Mm-hmm.
It just.
And so here I am.
Yeah. And that's okay. That's good. It's very good.
Are you opposed to a Sunday night swim meet? That Sunday night would be less ball time out there.
That's true.
Well, the problem is that we almost, the reason we have, sorry, the reason we have a Wednesday is because we filled up as many Saturdays as we can, so to have a kid swim Saturday and Sunday, an eight-year-old could probably swim Saturday, Sunday. I've had my competitive swimmers because they had to get in three Nebraska meets before they could swim regionals up there. They had to swim a Saturday and Sunday, and their times were terrible on Sunday. Terrible for them.
Well, I mean, they're used to, they're used to swimming on every Saturday anyway, but, I mean, that's what I'm getting at.
Right.
But it would be back-to-back days.
It's the back-to-back.
It'd be like, yeah, a doubleheader almost.
It'd range you.
That would be tough on the competitive swimmers.
That would be tough on a six-year-old.
It would also be tough on, on the coaches, too, if they're in two different locations. Okay, you need to be here on Saturday and here on Sunday.
Yeah.
That'd be difficult.
I think I'd like to, uh, avoid Sunday if possible, just cause, and then you kinda start digging into family time during a busy summer schedule anyway.
Yeah, I don't know what ball is, if Tuesday or Thursday would work as opposed to Wednesday. I don't know.
I could.
I don't know.
Wednesday's typically T-ball.
Yeah, blast ball.
And T-ball.
We can, yeah, we can, since the schedule's set for, for this year, um, we can definitely start conversations about next year.
Mm-hmm, okay.
But we could approve the meet schedule this year.
Well, I mean.
That's what we.
Obviously, that's what it, and not what you're here for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Approving our schedules.
Right.
Is, what's the Saturday one, what is it?
June 27?
Right.
Yes, yes.
And then we're done by, by.
We're, we're usually done before the pool opens. The only time we ever have issue with running into pool hours is league meet, when all five teams are here, and there's what, like 500-plus people here for the meet. We were still done and packed and out of there at 2:00. It was one hour that we, that we ran into the pool time, and most people that were standing out there were, you know, we were, we were, they could tell we were packing up and getting out of there, they were okay to wait. So that was.
We got phone calls, but, okay. They don't tell you, but yeah.
On two different ends of it, yeah. They'll smile at me and then yell at you.
They'll scream at us.
Yeah. Yeah. They're not gonna yell in my, to my face probably, but, you know, and they were, they started letting them in, you know, while we were packing up our boxes, because we were not on deck, we were not, you know.
We were asked to make sure that if you do practice, which we're gonna talk about that, that you definitely are out by 12:30, because they cannot get the pool ready by 1:00 if you are not out of the, out of the pool by 12:30.
We, we are, I mean, we get, we get out of the water at 12:30, and I make the kids keep their stuff. Sometimes my level three swimmers bring their stuff around, and I can make them keep it over in the concessions, but I always make my kids keep their stuff in the concessions, and they stay there until there was a guard on post, and then we could go, and when practice was done, they go back to the concessions and to grab everything in that corner and not be on deck, and we are, I mean, out of the way.
That was just another request.
Yeah. No, definitely, we should, we'll continue to be punctual.
Yeah, that was the answer.
On the clock.
Yeah.
Okay. So, uh, so this year's Wednesday night meet then is, where are we?
What's council's opinion on it?
I'm with me, I guess. It's set, we don't have much choice.
Say, we're gonna catch flack on it, but I'm like Diane, where you guys have it set, so let's just try it. Next year, we'll.
Uh-huh.
Make it happen a different day or something.
Okay.
So I'll move, move to approve the 2020 sunflower league schedule for the pool.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Seven oh.
And practice times will be after a manager is.
Yeah, once we get a manager in place and.
We can talk again. Do I need to come back in this form, or can we, well, I guess because the policy.
If it's policy, they don't have to change a policy change. They'll have to change the policy.
So when we have a manager, then I'll get back on the agenda.
We'll let you know.
Okay.
Unfortunately.
I hope that's soon.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Emily's here.
Emily?
Sorry, I'm so a little late. I was over in Hanover, and I went a little bit longer than I was expecting, so, um, but I am Emily Badidek with the Central Regional Planning Commission, and I'm here to go over just a little bit of paperwork for the fire station grant, but also just to answer questions you guys might have. I know some of you are new to the council since all of that was submitted and everything, so, um, but I guess to start, the first thing is the, obviously, you guys were awarded the grant, and there's a contract from Department of Commerce to be approved.
Yes.
It's signed, um, that just needs to be simply mailed off to Commerce at this point. Um, the city did not have any conditions for the contract, um, nothing that needed to be completed, other than the blood volume income survey being approved and checked, and it was, um, officially approved, so we're ready to submit the contract and just sort of keep things moving forward. Um, and then, I guess the other, a couple other things I was just gonna mention were, uh, the environmental assessment is in process, um, there, I've gotten quite a few responses back, nothing's coming up environmentally for the project, I didn't expect there would be anything, uh, but there, they have to be to me by March 20th, and then I can wrap up that process, and that's really the only thing left besides mailing in the contract that needs to be done. Um, once Commerce approves that assessment, then the grant funds are released, so basically, they're there for the city to draw on whenever you're ready.
Does that environmental study come out of our share or your share?
It is part of, it's on the local side.
On the local side. It's our share then.
Yes.
Because we're, you get a lot of these expenses in here like this before we ever see a building or even think of looking at the building.
Yeah. Well, the, the environmental assessment is required by Department of Commerce before anything can happen on the project, just to make sure that there's, you know, they don't, for some projects, it's more likely, but they just don't want something to come up, have design be done and everything, and to have something come up with the environmental that holds the project or makes it not possible. So that's why they have that be the very first step that occurs in the overall process, is to have that environmental clearance, and that just is because of the federal funding that's involved.
Now, some of this money, this nine, $907,000, that can be in kind also, I mean, that doesn't necessarily have to be cash money that we have to spend, right?
Um, if it, if that had been put in the application, that's true, but that was never discussed as part of the initial application, so there's still a chance that we could ask for that, um, but it would be just a matter of figuring out exactly what that cost would look like and then submitting a request to Department of Commerce. Any other? Yeah.
One question. When's the deadline for, need to know? We say yes or no? I mean, is there a deadline?
Just on moving forward?
Yes.
Overall? Um, the contract just has to be returned by April 17.
April 17, thank you.
Yes.
What are you looking at a completion date on this project?
It has to be done by March, I think it's the 15th of 2022, so it's a two-year cycle.
Two years, and we have to have contracts awarded it by a year, if I remember right.
Yes.
By next March, yes.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to see it completed by then.
Yeah.
I'd like to see it completed by December of this year, November.
Yeah.
That's why I was wondering what your program allowed for length on this, because, you know, we should be able to keep this ball rolling just right on through, so you have the, the footings and everything poured before winter gets here.
Mm-hmm.
That's what I was wondering, what's your program allowed for length on this, because, you know, we should be able to keep this ball rolling just right on through, so have the, the footings and everything poured before winter gets here.
Are the buildings closed before winter?
Yeah, building everything so they can do interior work.
Yeah, and really, with this being a building project, sometimes on utility projects, we see it drag out longer because there's other agencies that have to approve, like KNEC, things like that. So I would assume that for a project like this, that it should be able to get started earlier.
It's a pretty straightforward project. It's a big garage.
Yeah. So I don't, I don't, I wouldn't anticipate any reason why it wouldn't be going out for bid this summer, so. Obviously, that's ultimately up to client, but.
Yeah.
If anything else ever comes up, don't hesitate to reach out to me anytime to ask questions or go with Austin, and he can always call me and ask questions too. That's why I'm here, so.
Yeah, because we're moving forward with getting all the plans and everything with BG and having those meetings and.
Right.
So we're getting started on that. Hopefully, we'll keep this moving along at a pretty fast pace, we hope, so.
Good. Okay. My only other question was, do you want me to take, do you want me to take those contracts with me, or do you just want to drop them in the mail tomorrow?
We'll drop them in the mail tomorrow.
Okay, sounds good. All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up.
Are you going to approve the contract?
Oh, that's right.
We didn't approve that last meeting, did we?
We approve moving forward, pending review of the contract.
I'd like to make a motion.
Move to approve forward the CDBG grant for the fire station.
Prove the agreement.
Agreement, contract, yeah, for, what, $600,000, is that correct?
Yeah, for the grant, yeah.
Yeah, for the grant.
Second?
Have a second? Any more discussion?
Yes, I've got something there. If this is going to be final, if we say yes right now.
Yeah, you approved the contract. We had, yeah, just like we had the, I mean, if you had any problems with the contract, that's what this was for, but the special meeting we had last week.
I realize, and at the special meeting, we didn't have a chance to discuss. I was the only one that voted against it. There's a, a couple of things I think we should consider, because you said April 17. I talked to a gentleman here with money, and he was told that the city wasn't interested in dealing with local banks.
We're, we're, we still, yeah, hold on, I'll get it. That's not true.
This is my floor. I don't want to hear what you got to say till I get done talking.
Okay, well, Terry, go Terry. Terry's the floor.
After he informed me, he, what he said was that there was a council person that approached him about working out a deal where there could be a lease thing done, and it would be with nickels and dimes of being equal to what we're going to spend taking the $600,000. But that we weren't interested, and he was informed by you, Administrator, that the city's not interested in doing that. And I think if we could keep the money at home and build it for exactly what it's going to cost us anyway, we should look into that before we sign our name on the line.
We did look into just funding it ourselves, Terry, and the cost was going to be at least what our share is.
I was told a figure of around, I didn't bring those papers with me tonight, because I thought there was going to be some more time to talk about this, looking into doing it the same way that Hanover did, and it was going to be just about exactly what we were going to spend. But we're going to use federal money, $600,000, so I was kind of, that's something I wanted to discuss and see if anybody else even had a feeling that way. Now, you can, I'm off the floor, you can say what you want, Austin.
We, I've never said anything to anybody about denying local funding. In fact, the exact opposite is happening right now. We have been in discussion with Citizens Bank, and we are going to start discussions with other banks about funding it. As far as the cost of the project, we did, through local contractors, find out a bare-bones estimate of how much it would cost for a contractor locally to do it without grant funding, and that opened up more questions than we could get answered in the amount of time that we have. And I'm fairly confident that if we were to forego the grant process, it would end up costing the same or more than with the grant.
Well, it stands to reason that it would when you've got a price figure figured out, and everybody's going to bid accordingly that way. I mean, the bank said if we did this lease agreement thing like Hanover did, that they would be within the ballpark yearly for 10 years, exactly what, what we're going to be with, going with the federal deal.
Well, it's, it's, the, the amount of money is not determined by the bank, it's determined by the contractor. So we can do the local funding for our portion of it, that's true, and we're looking into that. But to forego the federal funding could cost the city more.
I'm only one vote. I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention about that, because I think we could do it and keep the money at home, because to put bonds out, that money leaves our community. When you're talking about those bonds.
Why can't we do it and still do local financing with what, and we're still keeping the money at home?
Right.
The way I feel is if we deny.
Not with bonds, you're not, excuse me.
If, if we don't take this grant and we say, no, we don't want the grant, we're shooting ourselves in the foot for any other grants we try to apply for, and we're going to get denied because we didn't go through with this one when we got it. So we're setting a precedent down the road that we're not going to get any grants we apply for because of that.
With the bond and temp note funding, we can have local banks buy it, which means the money would stay local, because the local banks would be buying the bonds or the temp note, whichever way we decide. And that's a possibility, and that's what I've discussed with the bond council we've used in the past.
At what interest rate?
That's what we have to discuss with the banks, the local banks.
There's not a better time to have had that discussion already.
We have to go out to bid for that. They're not going to go, oh, we'll, we'll do that, and then we can't go to the next bank and go, okay, they're doing that, what are you going to do? They bid it at the same time. So it's, and we have to have somebody write the paperwork up.
Yesterday, there was a chance, every day changes, and it's getting better the way the country's going, but at 2.1% interest, we could do a 10-year lease right now. And when we get done doing this and paying this 40,000 or 39, whatever it is, thousand to what setup and tack that on and start figuring, okay. I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention.
And we would be negotiating the price, we can, we can negotiate the price without a financial advisor. We just need the bond council to write the paperwork up.
Is this similar to what I visited with you about that way you had at the league conference?
Yeah, I mean, this is what, I mean, it's, it's, there's a lease purchase option. Lynn had talked about that, they can purchase, the bond council said they can purchase the bonds or the temp note if we go that route, yes. Those are, I mean, those are what we've been in discussion with, with Lynn Mayer over at the bank.
And that keeps our money right here, local.
Keeps the money local.
Our local people to get in on it.
Yes.
If it's going to stay local, that's one thing.
And he said no penalty for early payment.
Right.
So we don't have to play the game with the bond thing.
That would be nice.
Yeah, he said no penalty.
Yeah, no, the, the options are open for local banks, yes.
Yeah, because I had visited with Dennis Kasher with that, that I had talked to you about when we went to the league council. Yeah, conference.
Yep, no, we definitely, I mean, especially with the interest rates and, well, with the Fed talking about cutting them even more, yes, local banks should be able to, to help us out.
Okay, so we won't have to pay Rickens.
We would have to, if we go that route, we would have to notify them with 30 days ahead of time. I don't see that as an issue, seeing as we do have money in the bank, quote-unquote, or money in our funds specifically for this, set up for it, so we can pay for the project right now as it goes, and then eventually have that money on hand, sitting there for us to use as well.
But same time, like Terry mentioned, now's the time to be locking in a good rate.
Yes, definitely. Yes.
Now, I think if this is a thing that you can keep the money here, then I think, and there's some credit goes to the people that worked with this, Emily, and got, got this thing passed, there's a lot of credit should be given to those people that did it. That's all I got to say.
Any more, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
We'll get those to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
There are two questions, probably we could, well, actually, one question that we could inform the public on, that I get asked a lot about this, fire station is, is it going to raise taxes? I mean, we could, yeah, I mean, we can make that, I mean, let people know that's not going to raise taxes and stuff like that.
No, we, I, I, we can set this up where it does, is not raising taxes for this project.
I just, they just want to be known and clear that it's not going to do that.
Right.
Okay, next up is the temporary one-way sign, 11th and 10th between Center and Carolina.
You want it to go west?
That guy.
Only.
Why?
Because traffic is using it like it's Center Street, and I have animals and children, and there's other neighbors to do too, and it's getting extremely heavy traffic.
Well, I know right now, there's a lot of parents parking in the church parking lot, so the kids are leaving the school and walking down the hill, and then they're.
Or people go to school, and if they don't go right, they don't want to go straight, because that road's awful, so they go left, and then they come up the alley and loop around. It's, there's been a couple of close calls, including kids' basketballs getting run over and things, so.
You just want this temporary for the construction period?
Correct, correct.
When are they slated to be done? I know they're moving.
They're moving progress.
It's 22 days total.
The rain will set them back there, too, I imagine.
Yeah, I was halfway surprised they had as much poured as they, but once they had that down and compact, they were pouring, so they got that one more pour, and once that's set, they have delayed, at least let it set for seven days, unless the temperature goes up, and then that shortens the time. So you could look for the similar side. The latest they could probably be done is mid-April, but I foresee they'd be done before that.
Barring weather.
Barring this, yeah.
Yeah, I was impressed how quickly those first two pours went in.
Yeah.
Okay, any more discussion?
Move to approve, resolution 2020-02, temporary one-way sign down the alley.
How long is it temporary?
Till the construction.
Till, till Test Street reopens.
Right, till the construction's done.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Seven oh.
Uh, next up, we've got the second phase of the C-cliff project.
This is the third time we're applying for this project. It's for fiscal year 2022, 2023, so it's not, I mean, it kind is a next year, because 2022 for the state opens in the middle of 2021, July, somewhere in there. So this monies could be allocated for that, but that would be the start of the planning process. So it could go into 2022 and as late as 2023. This is a project that is pretty necessary since that, that portion, I mean, it's highway, and we typically mill and overlay the highway every seven years. This would alleviate that and create a more permanent solution. I forget if the brick goes down that far anymore, but it would just finish out the highway. And it would be a million-dollar grant, slightly less.
The question I have.
Yes.
If those flags are correct, that someone staked out there, there's about 15 feet from that flag to the bridge approach.
The flag.
Is it what?
The flags.
They got the flags, if you drive by there, there's flags about 15 feet north of that bridge.
Uh-huh.
Is that where ours stopped?
There is a little bit of asphalt.
If we're going to do it, we need to go clear to that bridge. We don't need to have a 15-foot spot of asphalt in there.
More than likely, the state would chip in, because it would be their portion.
It's theirs.
It would be their portion, so they would pay for it. It would behoove them to pay for it, so.
If we're going to do this project, the state's going to be right in with us, because I'm not going to do it and leave a 15-foot spot.
Well, I don't want to do it for them.
No, I don't either.
No, no, and if they approve this, more than likely, they're going to do the, agree to do it with us, and we've had that decision.
Okay, because like I said, I just don't want to leave.
I agree.
A section of asphalt, come off the bridge, asphalt, and then ride onto.
Yep.
Concrete the rest of the way through town.
Definitely, I, I don't think they'd want to pass this opportunity up for, for onsite contractor to just skip that 15 to 20 or however.
Whatever, yeah, whatever it is, like I said, I'm not for sure. I just seen the, the flags there, noticed on both sides, it said RW on it, I thought, yeah.
Oh, those, the right-of-way, those, that just shows you how far the, the road is up.
Yeah, but it still sets in, so I know there's a distance there, yeah.
But that, that doesn't necessarily mark where a line's at. But no, I, I agree with you. They, they should, they should latch on to this.
Yes.
It would make sense. But this, so if you would just approve, basically just submitting an application for the grant.
Move to approve the application for the second phase of the C-cliff grant.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Seven oh.
Next up, we have to have a motion to recess, no way.
Move to recess, regular meeting for the Public Building Commission.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Seven oh.
Right, call to order the Public Building Commission meeting.
Pipia?
Here.
Baikman?
Yeah.
Hughes?
Here.
Fry?
Present.
Schroller?
Here.
Barron?
Here.
Thrum?
Here.
Seven oh.
Move to pay St. Gordon Associates LLP $1,250 for audit fees.
Got a second?
One second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Seven oh.
Motion to recess.
Move to recess, Public Building Commission.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Seven oh.
Uh, notice in hearings, do we have anything on that?
I don't, I don't have any.
Okay. Just consent agenda. Do they have any discussion on any of the items on there?
Easter egg hunts are good.
Yeah.
Move to approve the consent agenda for the Easter egg hunt, iguanas, Easter egg hunt, Baptist Church clerks report, revenue expense report, and municipal judge report.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Seven oh.
Uh, next up is appropriations ordinance number 3719. Anybody have any discussion on that item?
Move to approve appropriations ordinance 3719.
It's way down this month, too. Second.
Okay, this is a roll call, right?
Yes, this is a roll call. Graham? Pipia?
Yes.
Baikman?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Fry?
Yay.
Schroller?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Thrum?
Yes.
Seven oh.
Oh, I did have one question.
Yeah.
I see where Los Cabanas hasn't paid their rent for two months.
Yep. We sent a letter.
Okay.
What was that you said? I couldn't hear you.
I say, I see where Los Cabanas hasn't paid their rent for two months.
Oh.
That's kind of unusual, isn't it?
No, they're slow.
Well, I know.
Yeah, usually it doesn't get to two months.
I was gonna say, usually doesn't get to two months, so.
That is correct.
No, I know they're usually behind at least one month, but, no.
Yeah.
Okay, so we need to watch it.
Austin, you're next.
All right, uh, first on the list is the Schwab Eaton grading plan. Uh, I gave this to you, uh, last week to look over and, and consider, uh, some of the changes from the previous plans are the inclusion of T-ball field west of Blue Diamond, uh, better definition of parking areas showing how many parking spots will be available, and the sidewalk along 20th Street. Um, if you have any questions, concerns, love to hear them. I wanna give them to, uh, Schwab Eaton, so maybe we can make changes if necessary, or, um, if you're fine with moving forward with, uh, this plan.
I've talked to probably 50 to 60 people who actually took this around town with me, and a lot of the older people, my age plus, grandma, grandpas, do not like the parking area so far away from the T-ball, or from the baseball diamonds. Some of their recommendations was be taking that multipurpose field and turning it and putting it towards the north end of the property line up there. Just do a 180-degree turn on it. Still have it there, but then you can get some more of your parking down along the ballpark down there. Just a thought.
I still think it'll fit in the horse arena.
Yeah, but you gotta explain to the horse people why it's not there.
Well, how often does that get used?
Plus, then the parking would be a long ways from the multipurpose.
Well, just walk down that, just walk down the trail between the two.
The multipurpose, we where?
If, if it was where the horse arena is, if you put the multipurpose where the horse arena is, there's no parking by it.
No, I meant turning it, putting it along the north.
I know what you're saying, but Keith's saying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Put it up there.
Just walk straight north, um, between the two fields, down, just down the hill.
From the, but the parking, from the parking? If, if you put the horse, if you put the horse arena, or the multipurpose field here, where would these people park? They'd have to park way up here and walk a block and a half, or over here and walk. It just, this is, the parking's more central here than it would be if that was there, is my point.
The one time I know it really gets used is quality.
Norton Fairtime, I know that.
Yeah.
But according to Brian, it doesn't get used all that much.
Yeah. I know when we lived up there, I, I saw it got used.
I'm just gonna buy what, what he said, only use, and he sees it twice a year.
Yeah. Every now and then on Saturday, you'll see somebody up there, you know, messing around in it with a calf or something, practicing roping. That's about all I ever see, too, so.
Maybe close to fair time.
That was, you know, a couple of people gave me that idea, bring it in, I said, I'll bring it in. I'd like, so I don't know what it'd cost or if it's even feasible, but, then you could have parking between the, take this and put it up here.
Yeah, but I was just trying to see.
So, how would you have the driving lane, then?
Huh?
How would you have the driving lane, then?
Well, it would come down.
From the upper lot? From the new parking lot?
He's talking about this driving lane that comes in and drops off.
Bring it down along the side, you just, I don't know how you'd fit it in there, Austin. It was just, it was just ideas when I took this out and was showing it to people that...
Well, the only thing I could see.
I know there's a lot of elevation changes in there.
Right.
Is it would, you could make it about half the size and have this for...
Right.
Parking there without turning it, because I don't know that you could turn it without taking out that.
You would have, you would have more pedestrian versus auto cross-traffic with that, though. People would be walking across those lanes.
Just thoughts.
There's no idea.
I'll ask him about it.
Just, you know, people I've visited with out in the streets and stuff, so.
Okay.
For my two cents, I really like this design, 'cause I think he listened to a lot of it. They added more parking there closer and kind of moved things around, put the T-ball field in. It looks like a lot of dirt moving to me, but.
Right. It, it is, um, and it's, it's a lot of solid pavement, too, with the, with the lines.
Or you got a lot of problems runoff.
I guarantee you, it's paved, yes.
Where are they taking the water? I guess that's my big deal. I don't see any major storm outlet to get what's currently going under the ball fields to the, that runs under the Blue Diamond and the Black Diamond. Are they gonna disband in that?
No, they're, they're, I think they added a few more lines in there. Uh, specifically, you see from that new dr- uh, drop-off zone, there's stuff under there. They added one at the corner of the multipurpose field. Uh, that same one that still runs behind it, they added that drain, detention area to catch a lot of water, and I think we're, we're banking on this multipurpose field to catch a lot of water as well. Um...
But you gotta remember, you just put in a brand-new parking lot up there that's gonna be a solid concrete, so that water's gonna come off of there faster than what it currently is.
Correct.
Into the, into the curb, so, you know, we're gonna have to make sure this pipe they've got kinda outlined coming around the outside will be majorly big enough to...
Yeah, and I, I mean, it's...
There's a ton of water comes off of that, 'cause right now, unless they change the inlets up here off of 20th Street, everything's downhill from 20th Street, you're gonna have to put a, a nice crown in the curb or something to keep the water on 20th Street, on 20th Street without coming down the driveways.
And I think they are banking on, 'cause they're changing a lot of the grades, uh, trying to keep the water out, uh, and, uh, where they can. I think they're bank, uh, they're using, uh, the, the land to direct where the water's gonna go when it's on the surface.
Because I know that storm drainage on 20th Street goes all the way back underneath the ball field, clear down to the...
Yep.
Goes clear underneath both ball fields to the lakes, so.
Yeah, it's right there.
Mr. Mayor, uh, have we exhausted the brains of the people that's been, Fortin Rec that's been taking care of this? I mean, they've been taking care of it and knowing a lot of stuff about it. Maybe they have a little suggestions that they might help us with. Brian Froggo and some of the guys that work for them and stuff.
And they were, I think, on some of the planning and meeting at, at...
They've been fighting water and problems there forever.
Oh, yeah, forever.
They might have some good suggestions. I think it's a good idea to ask them.
Yep.
Schwab Eaton was contacting, uh, Brian Froggo.
Was he?
Yeah, I, I think the, the director from the council, I know, I know Schwab Eaton got in contact with Brian.
Good.
I hate to be the one to bring this up, but there's a little, yeah, I know, over here, there's a little spring that comes when it's a really wet year, and I was walking around last year and I was talking to Brian, and the water was coming up out.
Sure.
Uh, whereas more from...
The Black Diamond?
Well, I, yeah, I don't, I don't have a fight in this, the dogfight at all, 'cause I don't have kids that play ball. But my point, not the Black Diamond, actually, it was, it was both of the blue and the black.
Yeah, but it sets in a corner, the Black Diamond down there.
Yeah, right down there, and it comes off that hill, and I don't know if anybody gave them a head up on that, that on those really soggy wet years, that it does come out, it comes out of the rock and it just roars on down there, so.
Is that one corner, like last year? I don't think that, that grass got fairly tall on that one corner of the black field because of that, 'cause they couldn't get it mowed.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
I do like how they have all the fields graded, so it drops to the outfield, all of them, instead of running towards the infield.
Well, does anybody else have any changes, different ideas? Are we all right to send this plan basically to them to finalize and get a little bit more detailed?
And once they, once we move past this, um, they said they were going to pri- not prioritize, but list out the things that needed to be done and put an estimate next to each thing.
I have one question. It says batting cages. Are we getting, they putting two of them in or just one? It only shows one, and the only reason I say that is currently we have one, and they've always said we, they've wanted to always put a second one in up there.
I don't know how much that will fit, uh, that box they have there. Uh, I don't...
Okay, I was just curious.
I don't know what the current one is, it's on there.
That was one of Brian's deals, that they've always wanted to put another one in right beside that one, and...
And this would be the time to do that.
Right, and that's what I said, it says cages, so I don't know if that's two going in there. Like I said, it's not, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not sure on that.
Okay.
Doesn't give you any dimensions.
Yeah, how do you wanna move for now?
Yeah, House Counselant wanna proceed?
I think we need to know how much it's gonna cost for one thing.
Right, and that's the next thing. If there's no major changes, if there's no major changes or anything like that. I think they wanted you guys to see this before they showed you the list, the price.
And definitely you can tell about the spring, so they can...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I imagine Brian probably told them.
Just in case.
I'm sure they know what.
We have a street.
I, I know they had meetings with Brian, so.
I'm sure Brian told them.
Yeah. Do we need a motion for that, or just...
You want a motion, or you wanna just take the concerns on and then bring back an estimate? Uh, I mean, I, that's the way we can do it. I'd take the concerns on. If nobody has any other issues, um, I can ask the, the question and then, um, see what happens from there and then, uh, pretty much see what, if we can get the estimate for each phase or phases or however, however they're gonna list it out. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, next one, uh, we have been looking at, uh, trucks, uh, on auctions, uh, one specifically, uh, Purple Wave, uh, because they seem to have a lot of, uh, stuff that goes through, including state trucks, which is one, one of the examples, uh, that I have for you. Um, uh, we have in our budget this year, uh, $50,000, uh, to replace, uh, a tandem axle dump truck. Uh, we have two, uh, 1989 Ford, Ford tandem axle dump trucks. And, um, so we've been, we've been looking, watching the auctions, and, um, trying to figure out what works best and what can fit our equipment, or if it comes with a sander like the one in the picture, uh, does, that's great, too. Uh, and if it works with our, um, chip spreader for chip and seal, uh, that's an extra bonus, which actually, that, I think that's what we're, we're trying to require, uh, when we go and pick out a truck. Uh, with these trucks, we try to do an in-depth information, uh, grab from whoever owns them, uh, to see, uh, if there are issues with them, um, or, uh, why they're getting rid of them, um, and so on, to see if they are a good fit. Uh, what I, what I'm asking for is to see if we can get authorization, uh, to purchase, uh, maybe up to 50 thou- uh, if necessary, two trucks to replace these 1989, uh, Ford tandem axle, uh, dump trucks with the budgeted amount that we have in our, in our, uh, in our funds. Um, and basically have the authorization to do that via these auctions, because sometimes you don't catch the, catch the trucks right of way. Um, and it, I'd hate to, to pass on a, a deal, uh, just because I can't get a meeting scheduled or, uh, something like that. Uh, we would pass every truck, uh, one, Gary would look it up and down, uh, and two, uh, we would check with our local, um, uh, truck mechanics, uh, to make sure we're getting the best deal we can.
Something they can work on.
Something they can work on, and something they don't work on, on a regular basis is also key. Uh, whereas, uh, certain ones, they get in all the time that have the same problem, we don't want that. Uh, we wanna make sure we have a truck that'll last us, uh, quite a long time, so that's what we're asking right now.
So, both of these trucks we have have major problems?
Um, what, which ones have we submitted? I mean, it's...
There's one down there now, they're working on it, but what is it? I can't even remember if it had, I don't know if it's wiring or air, some of that hydraulic stuff that's so old they can't find the parts anymore.
Yeah.
Hydraulics and... I think it's hydraulics and they can't get the parts.
Yeah, um, a lot of times we'll run across that where we can't find the parts or we have to...
From 1989?
Yeah, from 1989.
So if it was something like this truck in Norton, somebody would go out, Gary would go out and look at it?
Yes.
Be a little worried about what kind of rust, rust bucket shape it would be in. I can see rust in the picture, so.
Yes, definitely. We don't, we don't want to, um, uh, get something that we'll regret.
'Cause now we've got some other dump trucks, but they, uh, we can't use them for what these, we would use these for?
No, these are the bigger ones, and they're not all made the same. Uh, the, so I think the two that we got recently, they can't back up to our, uh, to our chip spreader, uh, because of how the airbags, um, on the back are positioned. So they can't work with that. Um, so, yeah, the, I mean, they may be able to do a single task, uh, like move snow around and use the sander as you move snow around, but they can't do the multi-task that we require, um, all the time.
Because I see we had, we, we have a 1999 dump truck and we have, what, and then we have a smaller one, a smaller dump truck.
Smaller ones, yes.
And then we have the International Dump Truck. So we've got several trucks, but they don't do what the, what the two are, the 89s, we don't, they can't do the same things.
Right, I mean, it's, yeah, the, and we use all the trucks, uh, all the time. I mean, not 100% of the time, but we, we u- utilize all these trucks, so it's, um, it's not like we can just get rid of the 1989s and be good. It's, we need something to replace them with.
Were the 89s part of the three that you bought up north and...
No, the, those are 2005s or something like that.
2004, maybe?
Yeah, 2005, there was a 2005 and 2006, I think.
We have two, we have a 2004 and two, uh, International 2004 and a Sterling 2004.
Okay.
Bought those used.
Bought those used, yes.
State of Nebraska.
Yeah, all the big ones we typically buy used.
Yeah, even the 89s down there are, were used when we bought them.
Right.
And then we have a 1999 International Dump Truck, it said.
I think they came from the Nebraska surplus auction, the 89s, uh, Nebraska, State of Nebraska, a long, long time ago. Okay.
Well, did, well, did you say you had a couple you wanted to get rid of, too?
The 1989s, those would be the ones we would... Yes, yeah.
So, you're looking at buying one?
And if the, well, if the budget fits it, if we can find good, not, not decent, but good trucks, um, if we can fit, um, two in, in the $50,000, uh, that, that would be preferable, to get rid of these 1989s that we have.
That we do use both of them?
Yes.
All the time?
Yeah.
I noticed both, this particular one from Norton's got an automatic in it, so it'll be easier to move snow, 'cause I know I've heard the guys all moaning about having to shift all the time.
And now you have to, now you have to have a, a special, they separated the automatic from, from the manual CDLs.
Manual transmission, yep.
Uh, so you have to get a special certificate for manuals.
Yeah.
CDL.
If you got a manual already, you can drive with automatic.
You can drive the automatics.
Yes, regardless, yes, yeah.
But if you, if you haven't, haven't got a Class B yet, or Class A, and you take the test ride with an automatic, you can drive a manual.
Correct, yes, yeah.
So we do have a truck with a blade on it, though. It said we had three, three-quarter...
Right, we have trucks, quite a few trucks with blades.
With a blade on it, but we, you still want two of them. Do we have blades to fit? I mean, well, the blades we have, are these...
They'll probably...
They come with, the, the ones we've been looking at, they come with blades.
Come with blades, okay.
Yeah, so we would potentially surplus those, uh, the 1989s and with the blades.
So we didn't have to go buy more blades, too?
Correct, yes, that's, that's how, that's how we did the Nebraska ones, this last one, we bought them with the blades.
Okay.
So, yeah.
So that wouldn't be an extra expense, then?
Eventually, what I would like to s- actually see is, is getting our own semi-trailer, that way we could take off and get our own loads of salt, rock, gravel, without paying trucking companies to do that. 'Cause I don't know what we spend a year in, in hiring trucking companies to do that.
Uh, we, we spend, whatever we spend on salt, we spend on trucking, too, more.
More.
More on trucking. More on trucking, yeah.
I noticed I was watching those.
That's what I would like to see set up for, is by our semi-trailer.
Because if you're, I don't think you're on them, we were getting salt, it was costing us like seven hundred dollars for the salt, we were like twelve fifty or fifteen hundred in trucking.
Correct, well, as it's, well, yes.
I think the last load that you got in was like five thousand dollars, if you paid for somebody to do that.
Yep, and.
Loads.
We're, we're hoping that we, we do one, just get one load a year, not one load, but just order salt once a year, because of how we can do it now.
Yeah.
Because of the size of the facility, so we're not relying, we, we don't necessarily need to call in a trucker every, every two months to, to go get it, but, I mean, that's an, that's an idea.
I mean, even asphalt, too, I mean, if you're running Manhattan back and forth, you could bring in more loads of asphalt.
More asphalt, because we, we do do some of the asphalt shipping ourselves, when we can, when we're doing the work ourselves, yes.
I mean, that's something to look at.
So, Mr. Council?
Move to your city administrator, up to you, fifteen, fifty thousand budgeted to look at tandem axle dump trucks.
Second, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Seven oh.
All right, next thing, I have included. Missing.
My printed money, so you can't even see the water line.
The wage scale?
No, water line.
Oh, I skipped, that's why it's with.
Hold on.
Oh, the water line, she didn't include it in the, in the front page.
Oh, oh, yeah, look at the front page.
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know about that.
Yeah.
You're on the water line.
Included is the water line project for this year, has all the, the specs, it's, give me it back to the specs. So it's. Includes Jenkins, Laramie, and some of May, from seventeenth to twentieth. A little bit of May, not, that goes west, but Jenkins and Laramie basically from seventeenth to twentieth, a little bit of cross connection between, between Laramie and Jenkins. So this is prepared to go out to bid for this year, this is a combination of last year's planned project and, and this year's proposed project. So we would like to go out to bid and open, I think it was April eight. So I'd love for you guys to approve going out to bid.
Do I have a motion?
I like what you got in there about boring the project versus, versus open trenching it all, so.
Yeah, a lot less.
Because I know we had a lot of disgruntled people on the last project, that their, their yards and stuff didn't get put back the way they, they should have been, rocks and everything still on top.
A lot of it is because, well mainly, because there's a lot of trees along this route, and to, to trench it, you would pretty much damage those trees. And boring does have that double bonus, where you're not digging up people's yards, except for the beginning and the end.
And the man, and the taps.
And the taps, and you're trying to avoid the damaging of the trees. So it, it, it's helpful on, minus the fact that it might cost a little bit more.
Move to prove point out bids on the twenty twenty water line project.
Second, second, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Seven oh.
All right, I included a new wage scale, where I bumped, basically bumped up the last wage scale by the seventy-five cents that you gave as a cost of living increase at the beginning of the year. So that's reflected in this wage scale. What's different from what we have right now is that before, it only showed you the beginning and the end. This gives a little bit of flexibility in the middle, so if I get somebody that came in with five years' experience and a certification in a certain area that's good for the job, I can, I can better pick a number and justify it. Whereas, when I only had a beginning and an end, I go, okay, let's add five, twenty-five cents to this and we're good. And it didn't look right when I went, if I go to the next one and go, you sound like thirty cents, it just doesn't make any, it didn't, it didn't give any guidance. So I prefer this model versus just a beginning and the end. I also included with the police raises, where they would be put at, since we already had two new police officers, that was easy to, to find them in the, in the existing ranges. So I adjusted the, the police officer ranges accordingly, and the chief of police has requested that we also move the reserve officers as well, due to the fact that when they're here to help alleviate the hours spent by the normal officers, that's not derogatory, but the, the full-time officers, they can take days, they take on vacation and all that, and we don't have to, we don't pay them benefits or overtime for that time, so they really help the process. So that's where they sit in this whole thing, but it's up for discussion for you guys.
How many reserve officers do we have now?
Two.
Two?
Yep.
They do get paid holiday pay if they work on a holiday, so they do get double time and a half on that day. They, just like any officer that would work that day. So that is overtime.
So your steps are basically your years of experience, is that?
Not necessarily, I mean, it doesn't work, I just took the range as it stood and divided the twenty, divided it by, I basically set twenty out there, because I thought that was a good number, and divided it by the difference in, in there, so it added up. It could be determined like that, but, I mean, it's, it's not gonna be that because of how we do our merit raises, because it doesn't fit right in there. It just gives a, okay, I gave somebody with five years of experience and a certification, I put him in step seven. So somebody with just five years of, of experience, I could put him back in step five. So something like that.
That's from the get-go, I mean, if there's no nine-day deal or nothing.
Right, from the get.
Brand-new person.
Brand-new, brand-new person, experienced person, yes.
You know, we, we kind of discussed earlier in the, or before the first of the year, that you were going to, it wasn't in the minutes, I tried to find it, that we were going to kind of bring this up a couple weeks beforehand, so that we could look at this stuff instead of just wanting to approve it at the meeting. You remember that flyer, or that handout that I gave us? Instead of just telling us and then we wanted to vote on it immediately?
You can do that.
And to tell you the truth, this would not necessarily be something bad to bring up at one of our workshops.
Yeah, so that we could look at this, instead of just bringing it up and saying, now we want to vote on it right away.
You can, the council can decide to do that, yes.
Okay.
This should, I mean, this is brought up now, because you already gave the raises, and I actually found a policy that did say, I don't know if it's the current policy or not, that said, every time you give a cost of living raise, you adjust the wage scale with it, so that's where that came from. The police officer raises, or the wage changes, the ranges, came with the raises they were given, so that, that was determined that way. So there's nothing out of line, other than the reserve officers that are different than what, than what would be expected.
But yet you want us to vote on the reserve officers' wages tonight, right?
You could, or you could wait, I mean, that's up to the council.
Okay, but I really feel like we should have had this to look at before tonight, to kind of put us on the spot.
You don't have to hold on it.
Well, I, I understand that, but I'm saying, then he put the wages, then he put the, for the reserve officers in the meeting tonight, so now it looks kind of bad.
He can do whatever he needs to do.
Okay.
It's, it's up to us.
But there's, I mean, this is a separate issue necessarily than giving the reserve officers their raises, because we've already given everybody else, and these are basically the last ones we've got left to take care of as, as it does.
Right.
So just because we're approving the reserve officers, doesn't mean we're approving this.
No, the wage scale.
Well, it is, because it's in the, it's in the wage scale. That wage is in the wage scale.
It doesn't have to be.
No, but, I mean, all these.
Well, we see it as just for the reserve officers, and then the others will be at another day after a committee. It doesn't have to be, you know, just blanket. If that's what is important tonight, is to get the reserve officers.
Yeah.
Wage determinations.
I would, I would say that's the only thing really we need to take care of tonight, and the rest of it's up for discussion. Whatever the council wants to take that up.
Right.
So.
So bring it up as a topic on the workshop.
That'd be a good time for it.
That'd be a good time.
We'll be having one of those probably in the next month or two, I would guess.
Do you want to do, well, we'll have to start.
Usually about every quarter.
Usually every quarter.
Okay.
Yeah, but that's up for discussion as well.
Okay, I was just gonna say, when do you want to, when do you want to have that, Austin?
I was planning a budget workshop in May, but that's, again, if you want to kind of continue conversations that are happening elsewhere, we can have more workshops.
Well, I mean, I guess, I mean, this is not anything that needs to be taken care of right away, because, is it really, because we've already given most, I mean, the raises.
This, this wage scale pretty much just determines, it's, the wage scale's for the new hires.
Okay.
So it's when, and it gives, so like, when we go to replace Kevin, or when we get a maintenance worker, too, range eight, that would put it with that cost of living increase, whereas on, on the new one, whereas we would put them in a range eight.
This is the new, new proposed.
That's the old one.
This is the new one, so this is what he's saying, if you're in range eight.
Okay.
So the beginning wage could be anywhere between fourteen oh four or twenty-one seventy-nine, and that's the way it's always been, that's what that says there. It's always been the same way. It's anywhere within that, depending on your experience or what you do.
Right.
That's what the range is about, it's telling you how much responsibility you have, why we put you in that range.
Right.
I mean, that book was approved in nineteen ninety-nine or something, about responsibility.
But we, we, we don't have an issue with the range really right now, I mean, like a Class Eight, even at the scale we got right now, is a max of twenty-one dollars an hour.
Right, exactly, it gives you a lot of leeway.
A lot of leeway.
Right, okay.
There's no range twenty on this, to put on the current range scale.
No, they're adding those, changing them from what they are to that.
Right, to the proposed, but if we don't approve the proposed range scale, then there's no.
Well, as long as you're not hiring a policeman, it doesn't matter.
There's always, there's always a twenty, like, it's always there, it's just.
We're just not using it.
We're just not using it as a police.
As a job description, it tells you what we should start you at.
Right.
Right. So you don't, I mean. Reserve officer.
Yeah.
Because you know, that reserve officer money fits within your number ten there, so it's no problem.
Right, yeah, I mean, they're at ten right now, so if you look here, a ten is anywhere between fourteen sixty-nine and twenty-two eighty-four, and what you want to pay these guys is seventeen eighty-nine, so it's within that range. So you can, I mean, you're not taking them over the range, there's, I mean, you don't have to change the range to change their pay. We can bring this up later if that's what you guys want. Not a big deal.
It's up to counts, does that sound all right? Wait and discuss it in more depth at a workshop?
Yes, I think we need to.
All right. Okay. Okay, financials, general fund's still sitting good, hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight above this time last year. Some of the larger expenditures that have increased, our expenditures to date have to do with purchase of salt.
With what?
Salt. We have been filling the new salt shed up, so that we don't have to worry about having salt on hand for the next big snow event. Yeah, we have decreased expenditures in the water and the sewer funds comparative to the previous year's totals. We are slowly increasing the balance of sales tax fund as well, it has increased by another fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars. That's all I have for financials.
Okay, standing committees, street. Anything on the street? Does anybody else have any concerns about the street?
Just see them out patching holes.
Yeah, there.
I noticed, I don't want to complain about it too, too loud, but I don't think it was gravel that got put on the north end of Eighth now, that's really a soupy mess up here north of town.
Might have been up that way.
I'm sure you're gonna get some complaints about it. It looks like they did some work up there, but I didn't think it was rock, I think it was mud.
Well, I don't know what they would have put up there.
We'll look into it.
That's not anything I had to say about it.
Water, wastewater?
Yeah, we had a meeting tonight, and Marge Cos had a leak in her basement, it's on a heating loop, and the leak did not go down the sewer, showed up an outside footing drain, and we credited her account for seventy-four dollars and ninety cents on the sewer side for a write-off. That was committee's decision, so. Stayed outside the house, didn't come in, so we credited her for that amount.
Anything else? Parks and Rec?
Any new word on the transition from MSR to subsequent organizations?
Not since, I, I've been in discussion every once in a while, when a group, a member of a group calls me, saying they're having conversations, multiple conversations with the Marysville Sport and Rec, it sounds promising.
What was that, I didn't hear what?
There's a group talking about taking over Marysville Sport and Rec's responsibilities.
The group here in town, or?
The group here in town.
Bonus.
How we doing on finding lifeguards, et cetera?
There's people coming in, filling out, filling out lifeguard, lifeguard applications, concession stand applications, we have a couple people interested in being manager, managers or manager, however, however we decide to run it, so.
We do have some people coming in, then?
Yes, yeah, we've had it advertised out there, so yeah, spring break should hopefully bring more people in.
Okay.
Cemetery and Airport? Police and Fire? Admin of Finance?
I have something.
Yep.
I would, I would like to enter this under that, I have something I want to read, just, after February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, City Council meeting, City Administrator St. John refused to allow my request for an amendment to the minutes of the February tenth City Council meeting regarding liability of throwing discs in the city park. CA St. John stated that the minutes belong to the clerk, and only the clerk can change the minutes. On February the twenty-fifth, I contacted the Kansas League of Municipalities and spoke with staff attorney Deborah Barnes. She stated that minutes are the official record for the governing body. There are no rules in statutes as to how minutes are kept. Some cities keep it simple, while others go into a lot of detail. It is up to the council. Attorney Deborah Barnes clarified that only the council can decide whether to amend the minutes. minutes or not, and that is done by a council vote. She also noted that speeches and discussion are usually not recorded except when a specific request for something to be included for the record is made. I request that this statement be included in the minutes for the record of this meeting. There's a copy for you. Now, I got one other thing.
Okay.
I'm concerned about the appointment you made for, to the mayor. I'm concerned about the appointment you made for the city attorney. I talked to Cindy today, and she said that City Code 1301 is still in effect, and that says that the mayor may appoint a city attorney in April. It also says the city attorney term will start May the 1st. So, why are we not complying with the code? We have to change the code, or?
The second part of that code says that once that it, a different person has been appointed, they will take effect as soon as they take effect. So, I'll have to go get that. That's in the bottom part of that 301.
I didn't see that.
It says, oh, man, I'd have to go get that part.
It looked to me like the turning wasn't in, it's not going to be valid if we don't do it the way the code books it, and I, I didn't see where it said that. Anyway, I just wanted to mention that. That's something for you to look up, but I do want this other thing in the minutes, or in-
If the, if the, they'll have to approve it to change the minutes, correct? So, they'd have to make a change to approve it?
I just want it in the minutes of this meeting tonight. I don't care about the whole-
Oh, I see.
No, I just want this included in the part of the admin.
This whole thing that you just typed out?
Yes.
You want this in the record?
Yes. That's all I have.
At the first regular meeting in April of each year, the mayor, by and with the consent of the council, may, may-
May or shall.
May.
It's May.
Appoint a city attorney, municipal judge, fire chief, and such other officers as may be deemed necessary for the best interest of the city. Such officers shall hold their respective offices for a term of one year from and after the first day of May of such a year, or until successors have been appointed and qualified. A, a majority of all members of the council may remove any such officer or-
The council may remove.
Right, by a vote which was held, or for good cause, the mayor may suspend or remove, mayor, the mayor may suspend or remove any such officer with the consent of the council.
The council never consented to that.
You appointed a new officer.
The mayor appointed a new attorney.
Right, and that's what it says right here. Such officers shall hold their respective offices for a term of one year from May, or until their successors have been appointed and qualified.
Without giving written notice, we have two, we have two attorneys on duty then now. We didn't give him written notice. It says there'll be written notice.
I gave him verbal notice.
Verbal doesn't cut it.
He has not shown up at a meeting saying that he wants to stay on board as our attorney.
In fact, he's asked to be removed.
All I want to do is comply with the contract. The contract that we have with him says we can give him up in 30 days, written notice, it don't say, by the way.
If he doesn't have a problem with it, then why, I guess I'm confused.
I just want to comply with what our codebook says.
Advocating on his behalf.
Or change the code, that's all.
We are complying with what our codebook says.
We had a workshop, and I asked anybody if they had an issue. I don't, I mean, we've had multiple discussions about this. I've never heard anybody say that they would like to keep the attorney that we had.
Never did.
Well, so you don't have a problem with getting a new attorney?
How to finalize that we're done with him is what we're trying to do properly, is what I'm trying to convey. If we have a contract that said we can get rid of him in 30 days, let's give him 30 days, and in April, whenever it is?
I could have given him written notice, and in my opinion, I thought it was better to call him myself and actually talk to him.
And if he sought to be-
Than just sending him a letter in the mail.
That was you, that wasn't the council.
I'd make appointments.
Pardon?
I, I choose who I want to appoint.
The appointment is fine. I'm, I'm not arguing about that. It's determination of our former attorney that we're not doing correctly.
If he, if, Mr. Mayor, if our, if our former attorney wanted released from it, and we wanted to release him from it, then it was by mutual agreement.
30 days.
But he did, he can waive that, and it sure just sounds like that's what he did, by asking to be removed.
Did he ask to be removed?
He's, he asked me in an email to remove him from all emails that he gets.
I was not informed of that, that, nobody told me anything about that. I didn't know about, no email.
And he also sat here while you guys talked about replacing him.
Okay.
Went out, a meeting that he showed up to, and nobody actually told him to show.
Right.
I found that later.
Is that right?
Well, I just assumed that maybe, Austin, I think we all kind of looked at each other, assuming that one of us had called him and told him to show up, and none of us had.
I didn't know you got an email from him.
He just kind of came.
Right. So, it's, no, it, the appointment replaces, you guys appointed a new attorney, and so the previous attorney doesn't hold that spot.
I'd like to get a copy of that email if I could. That's all I had to say.
Okay. Anything else under Admin and Finance? Appointments and wage determinations.
Let's see, it has the list, it's listed under, uh, these are two reserve officers that we wanted to bring up, kind of in line with, yeah, just that range 20, which, the range 20, if you're not approving the wage scale tonight, doesn't matter, it's just the wages.
Be under number 10.
Yeah, and they fit in there.
And he still will be out well within the range.
Well within that.
Well within the current range, yeah.
Moved to approve the wage determination for officers Packet and Watts.
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
7-0.
Uh, I don't have anything for executive session unless anybody else does. Uh, roundtable, Bobby.
Uh, nothing.
Keith?
Not about it.
Uh, still looking to about contracting diesel fuel at that next amount of gallons at a cheaper price.
Anything else?
I take that back.
We can't go back in line.
I knew you'd-
Anyway, um, there have been a group of people in town that really want us to go forward with the shooting range, not just for the use of the police department, but actually, there are, there's a couple of them that are willing to go get the training to be range masters, and they just, that has been brought up a lot more. There's like a little beehive of this going on, why we don't have an actual range here. Seneca has a nice one, you know, and they just don't understand, because, you know, what, Seneca's half our size, so why can't we have one here? And it isn't like we were, you don't have to have it for free. They brought up the discussion of if you want to use the range, you know, besides, you know, you don't have the paper for the rules, then you would have to pay a certain amount a year to use it, or per drop-in time. It isn't, it isn't something that they want the city to just have gratis at all. That's not, that's not it. They understand that there's, there's maintenance, there's costs, there's a range master of all.
Yeah, the insurance is pretty pricey.
And that's why I also explained, you know, that the insurance is quite hefty too on it, but I, I think that we could probably do this with the amount of interest that they actually have for this.
So, are you saying they would do a, like a swimming pool pass? A, a fee a year, you know, kind of like, like that kind of form, is that what you're trying to say?
Oh, yeah, they would be fine, or then-
I'm asking, I don't know what other cities do.
And obviously, like, most places, if you don't, you know, have a contract, or you don't pay a certain amount a year, you know, you figure out what it would be to come, you know, 52 times, you know, sort of, you know, if they just want to drop in.
$100, so that's what it costs.
I'm just saying, if they just want to drop in, then it would cost them a little more, just to be a drop-in.
And we'd have to have hours, right.
Talking about an indoor, or outdoor.
But they also, there, they also talked about a building, not a big building.
They were by the dump to have one.
Well, they built it. They have one already out here. You got one out here by the, by the, yeah, it's just never been completed.
I just wanted, I wanted to get conversation out there that-
The first thing we have to do is come up with rules, that's what the insurance people told me.
Okay, yeah, because there's, there's, I got somebody who'd be happy, he and Terry Douglas actually were in process before Terry got sick and passed.
To be range master.
Yeah, well, the whole range and range master thing. So, and he, he would like to come talk to council, and I just wanted to kind of bring it past you guys first. Okay?
Okay.
Didn't the county contribute a little to that shooting range also?
Move dirt.
Couldn't tell you, Earth did it in kind.
Yeah, okay.
Is that something that is the cities, or is, are they, they got a hand in getting to say something about it? Is it all the cities?
We own the land, we taught.
We, we own it.
It's just carrots.
We, they come out, the sheriff's department utilizes it for their training as well as our police officers, so, yeah.
But they have no ownership?
No.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Okay.
I have no other roundtable.
Todd?
Yep.
Diane?
Uh, the newsletter, the emails, well, not everybody has their phone number in it anymore, I see.
They don't know what it is.
Yeah, that's a-
Well, but then at least make the email so we can read them. The people that have their emails on here, I got the magnifying glass, you can't even read it with the magnifying glass. I mean, surely we can make it large enough so that you can read the emails, maybe? And spring cleanup, are we going to do it in sections like we did previously? Or, there's nothing said when the, what days you're going to do spring cleanup, but what parts of town?
There was a typo in there, she, that it's actually in April.
Okay.
When it, it's always the third full week in April. That's standard, I mean, it's set in policy, and she typed that incorrectly on there to say March, but we have since made a correction out on the web, out on Facebook, on the door, I mean, it's everywhere, so everybody knows.
That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about, before, we had Monday was a certain part of town, Tuesday was a certain part of town.
And we'll publish that in the paper and put it on the door.
Okay.
And on the website.
Okay. And then house numbers, we need that. I mean, there's still a lot of people that don't have house numbers. When people come in to pay their bills, or get pickup tags or something, can the girls at the counter ask people if they have house numbers, or just give them to, say, here, do you have house numbers? And if they don't, make them take them, because we've got numbers here, don't we?
Yeah, we've had some. And we've put it out there. Every, every, the last time we put it out there, lots of people came in.
I know, but there's a lot of people that still don't have house numbers. I've been out there looking for people's, to deliver things or something, and, or when we had goodie bags at Christmas time, there's still a lot of people don't have house numbers. We need, we need, we need, we need to push them. Make sure, tell people that they have to have house numbers out there. I mean, they need to get them on their houses. I mean, that's something, we've got them sitting here, let's get them out there, get them, and tell people they have to have them on there. I mean, I think, isn't there a rule that you have to have them on there?
I think there's a need.
I mean, I mean, if they have an emergency or something, they're going to wish they had them on there, and people can't find them. And we bought them, they're free. I mean, uh, basically, that's all I had, so.
Colleen?
Yep.
Kevin?
I have nothing this evening, sir.
Your children.
Sickers.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
That's impressive, I've been down the street.